I'll do is open the planning board meeting for October 1st, 2018. Around 6:30 we have a, I'd like to open the meeting at this time. And for the sake of interviews, I want to request a motion that we discuss the interviews.
But I, yes, but I think you have to formally open the two 6:30 meetings first.
We have to open these first?
Yes.
Okay, and then recess?
Yes.
We need a motion to recess.
Yep. And then, okay, I'll make more, okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the both hearings for 6:30. First thing is open public meeting for site plan approval for 320 Industrial Road. The second is a planning board continued public hearing for 924 for 1019 New View liabilities assets. Those that are open, I'd like to make a motion to hold those in advance and to recess to discuss planning, a new planning directors.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. We're in recess for discussion of the planning board director.
Okay.
Anybody want to make a motion or open the discussion?
On paper, I think they're both strong candidates. They both have lots of experience. I think our first candidate, in my opinion, is the stronger of the two. That's just, again, my opinion. And I would be in favor of the first candidate that we've, that we interviewed. I think she knows a lot about the city. For someone who doesn't live here, I give her a lot of credit for looking around and reviewing the ordinance and driving around and knowing the area. Knew what was on the schedule and also the questions that she asked of us, I thought, were appropriate as well. So that's my opinion.
I agree. I mean, they're good, both good candidates.
Yeah.
Good qualities. I think she had an edge over them. She's excited and those little things.
And she has more material experience.
Well, in an indirect way.
Indirectly.
But she did answer that question. She did some good answers to that question about how she would go about managing this down, what was important, what to look for, and how to build a team environment.
And she said, "I'm nice about it, I'm diplomatic, but I'm not afraid to take action and I don't, you know, beat around it." And you know what?
That's what you need.
That's management.
I think she had a little more, you know, and I'll go the other way too, as far as Eric is concerned. He's a little more rounded. He had, did have some experience with CEBG, but she had none whatsoever. But I think that's something that he learned. And he's worked in, more in the town locally, even though she was, the window was not that far away, up in New Hampshire. In her individual interview that I did earlier, is that it was interesting that you quite a bit into discussion of her political piece where she, I never did ask, she did tell me who the, well, I'm going to leave the candidate out, and how she nationally, nationally had organized.
Well, they run for office out there.
Yeah, and run for office, but how they had organized the different states and get the different states and had to get all the rules right, but also had put committees together and people to get petitions to get this guy on the, of these people on the ballot. So that was a, an aggressive type organizing type job, and I wanted to bring that forward. Something different, and does it apply? And I see that it does apply because it shows the initiative of someone to put groups, different groups of people in multiple states all at the same time. So that showed multitasking to me, and I think that's, that's very important.
And there's no doubt they're both multitasking. They're both very qualified. I did, I'd like her answer better onto what, you know, differentiated you as the, as who we would pick, what would even differentiate us. I think she quite clearly had a better interview tonight. The preliminary interviews were a little different, you know? Loved us wandering on a few people, but she had a great interview tonight. Stephen, I want to hear from you a little bit.
To me, too.
I mean, that's important, that's important, Ox.
I agree with Carol in her opinion. I think the first candidate had more my style of how I like to handle things, so I would go that way. I'm more looking to organize the office and put stuff in procedurally and work with the city clerk to get with, try to get away from more of the paper mode and more electronic. Based on her answers, I think that's something she'd be willing to tackle.
And now we have the time. Because these poor people, they're planes. You all remember.
Yeah, we remember.
Can anybody tell me exactly what an ultra marathon is? I am a little skeptical of anybody that would willingly engage in something like.
That she could stay awake while I talk. That's a marathon. She could talk to her. She could keep up with you.
There it is.
Yes, we're going to need a little.
She can talk as well.
We're going to need a little Jericho that balance comes over here.
So with that, I make a, does anyone else, I'm sorry, John. I do. So I make a motion for the human resource director to offer the position to our first candidate.
Second. Can I just check one thing?
Sure.
This happens oftentimes. We end up calling people and offering the job, and they start asking about, you know, about.
Salary.
Salary, vacation, because we have this really weird thing in the ordinance about.
But if we hire them before November.
No, they still get it.
They'll get their two weeks January. If we hire them, excuse me, after November.
It's bizarre.
We have to wait.
A whole year.
A whole year.
Right.
And then start.
And that's what happened to Kristen, but we worked it out with Kristen.
And I get to it, you know?
Now, also, the department head, you get to pick a range. You don't have to start at the.
So no longer you have to start at the very bottom. So we can negotiate, we can negotiate a range based on her experience, so you can start at mid-level or whatever, we can pick up. But just as long as she understands, you've had a conversation with her, or you have, I don't know that.
Yes, I have.
What the benefits are.
Not the benefits, but what the process was.
Well, you should send, send out, you know, what the benefits are. You should email them benefit managers.
Oh, yeah, I just.
So we don't get a question like, you know, what are the benefits?
Well, a lot of times, even though we tell them and they're advertised in the ad, we'll go through the whole process, get to the very end, and then they'll say, "Oh, wait a minute. You got four weeks right now. Can't I get four weeks?" "No, no, no. You get two weeks." But then after five years, you get three, you know, and like, if they're long enough, there's an incentive. I just want to make sure, that's all.
No, 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 yeah, I just think it's important for any final candidates to have that information up front.
So the motion is for the committee to make a recommendation to the planning board?
Right.
No, that's.
So for me, no, no. Because the committee.
Would they make a recommendation?
Three finalists. One, two, three, have the two. So now it's come to the full.
So do I have to?
I'm making the motion to.
Question, is it your intention that she would get the first offer, and if she declines or we don't come to terms, we would go to number two?
That could be in a motion.
That could be in a motion.
You want, do you want to make that a motion? You want to make that amendment?
Yeah.
Or you want to include that?
I'll put that in my motion, that's fine.
Okay.
So it's my motion.
They haven't been seconded, so we can do that.
So I'll make a motion to, to suggest to the, to ask the human resource director to offer the position to the first candidate. And if that offer is not accepted, that the offer then be made to the second candidate.
The first candidate's being Elizabeth.
Yeah, so Elizabeth, and the second one, Eric Ross.
Okay. Okay?
And you might also want to take another action in your regular meeting on the whole business, right? Because you're not in session right now, you took a recess.
Okay, I see what you're saying, to discuss it. You, good point. That's a good point, okay.
Okay, well, aye. Any further discussion? We're in recess.
I'm going to write an answer. Yeah.
So we'll go back into.
Yes, we'll go back. Okay, I have a motion made and seconded. All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
I'm going to write that in.
Are most of them go back into the regular session?
Thank you all, so to see you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
If you could make it a little lighter also, it doesn't get dark.
We're working on new plans for that.
I think my next year will be in good shape.
So we feel like November 4th.
You want to?
I put 22,000.
Six hours, don't be more than. Can you help you with that?
She's worked in other shit.
She's handled for my associates.
Yeah, I like.
Yes.
We're seeing there was an issue with house.
We got a couple guys somewhere on here, just the way I'm changing.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Social numbers over.
Social numbers over. Always a couple. Both in the regular, first 6:30, it will be with the, concerning the site plan approval for 320 Industrial Road. Gentlemen, you're about to squash apples.
That's what we did.
We have to move through the negotiations.
Under whole business.
Right.
Okay, stand right here?
Sure.
Yep.
My name is Dan Wolf, I'm with David Ross Associates, and we, tonight I'm representing 320 Industrial Road LLC. This is the facility that houses New England Apple products on Industrial Road. The property currently contains 34,000 square foot building, that I believe you're familiar with, and the, the production process is desperately in need of some outdoor storage. And what's being proposed here is the back portion of the building, we're looking to add about 20,000 square feet of a concrete slab. Now, someday in the future, maybe that will be built upon, and now we're just looking for that outside storage, creating that slab area there. Currently, it's lightly wooded out back there, so we are clearing some trees, and we are surrounded on two sides anyway by a wetland area, and they're currently before the conservation commission. We actually tried to meet with them last week, but they did not have a quorum, so we're meeting next week with them. On this slab, there is also a proposal to put a 4,800 square foot cooler space, and there'll be a loading dock to directly access that cooler space. But the rest of the area will be outside storage. As you know, we have submitted this to the planning department and have received comments back from a number of other departments. The most substantial, the most substantial of which was from the DPW, who had a few remarks that he wanted to comment on, and I've written a response tonight to address that. He had a few questions about the construction of this access driveway that goes around the back of the building. It's intended simply to be a gravel accessway. Beneath that is our infiltration system that'll take care of any increase in runoff from this proposed project. So we've provided a detail on the second sheet, the detail sheet. He's also alerted me to a brand-new part of the ordinance that calls for soil testing in any area of the infiltration system. And I have to admit that we are still trying to connect with the DPW to schedule that. I'm quite confident that the results of that will prove that this infiltration area is more than adequate to handle the design storms that we're, have designed on. He also had technical questions in regard to this infiltration area itself and what constituted the fore bay, and that's been clarified for him. He also had a concern about this loading dock and whether the turning radius out into the existing front parking lot was adequate, and we've addressed that. And then his last two comments, I wasn't trying to be sly or anything like that, but he mentions the actual construction of the slab itself. He had two questions that really are more building inspector and building code questions. So in my conversations with Mark from the DPW, I did make that reference that I'd rather have that in the hands of the building inspector, because they don't apply to the site itself, they're more the architecture of what's being planned. And he agreed with that, so I just commented on that briefly.
Do you want to do the other departmental comment, small word, John George?
Yeah, we'll get, because we get his for it.
Okay. I'm, I'm ready to field questions if you'd like. Is that something you'd like me to run through the slips?
Sure.
All right. We have them here. The planning director submitted a comment about the slab. I should have pointed out in my presentation, this wetland that surrounds the property here, there is what the Wetland Protection Act quite often leaves terms as a finger-like projection. It's a wet area that comes right up through here, and what we are proposing to do is to fill that area, and in return, we're going to replicate an equal amount of square footage along the back street area. So that is obviously the topic of one of our discussions with the conservation commission. The.
So were we going to replicate for that?
Yeah. There's, there's about 1,000 square feet of wetlands that are being filled here in the dark green.
Right.
And over here, we are excavating a portion of the property to replicate.
Okay.
The wetlands that have been lost, and that would be an equal square footage replication.
The Board of Health had asked, is there any discharge from the existing building in that? Will there be a contamination issue?
I have taken a look at this point here, at the terminus of that projection, thinking, am I missing a culvert coming from the street out front? What's happening? I did not see anything there, and I can only imagine it's just the hydrology of the area that's putting water to this lower swale area here. So I'm not aware of that.
And it doesn't continue to anywhere else? I mean, not only.
Yeah, it just.
There's nothing on the other side of the building where it comes out and rejoins.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
All right. So the comment from the planning director actually mentioned one other thing, is that over on the, I guess that would be the northerly side here, this slab is within a part of the 30-foot new work zone. And the point I was thinking I would make to the conservation commission, but happy to comment on it here, is that this is in an area that has been previously disturbed. In fact, there is an old railroad track that comes in from the main line out back here, a little spur that used to come in right to the back of the building. So this whole area here is just barren gravel and weeds through that location there. And if anything, yes, we are working in there, but we'll also be finishing off and making it a little bit more presentable out back there, which right now is, no offense, nothing of any sort of presentable condition. It's just gravel. Sections of the old track are still there, and those will be removed in this project. Other comments, the Board of Health. We've already touched on that. Board of Health commented on, is there some sort of discharge from, from some pipe or any contamination? And I'm not. Police Department submitted just a comment that says, "I approve. I do not see any traffic or police issues with this proposal." The building inspector simply circled the word "approve" with no comment. And the conservation commission said, "I've spoken to Mr. Wolf myself. He has filed a notice of intent and stormwater management plan with the commission, and it will be on the September 25th agenda, which has been continued to next week." And the fire department simply commented on our compacted gravel driveway with edging. As I mentioned, that is an extension of the accessway that will go all the way around to the back of the building. Can I answer any of your questions?
I have a.
Thank you.
So let's, let's pretend the building inspector did ask you about the 3-to-foot drop off the edge. What's your response?
My response is that I'm quite sure that the building code requires that any drop greater than, I believe, four feet requires some sort of rail, guardrail, or some sort of containment. And as the architect moves forward on the, the design plans for this slab, that will be included.
Okay.
Okay. Open up to the audience.
Snow storage?
Snow storage, again, the area in the front here, we, we pointed out a few areas that will have snow storage. It's a fairly easy area to follow, with plenty of different places to push the snow.
And they're, I mean, they're going to have them all marked in the plan, the snow storage areas.
How about on the slab? Will the slab be able to? How are you going to clear that, or are you not going to use it in the winter?
Do you have any sort of?
My name's Steve Brousse. I, I own the property, and my brother and I own the cider mill that occupies the building. The intent is to store empty crates that the apples come in on, on the slab. The volume of those happens between Labor Day and Christmas, falls off, starts falling off after Thanksgiving. But we need to get those bins off the front pavement and out of the building, so we've got more room to operate inside the, inside the full walls. So, yes, it will probably be used in the, in the winter. Yes, we may have to clear it with a tractor and dump the snow over the edge, but the use will be minimal at that time of year. It'll be, it'll be, I don't know if it'll be maximized right away, but most of the use will be between Labor Day and Thanksgiving.
Okay. Do I have anyone else in the audience which is to make any comments? Do I have anyone in the audience which may make comments? Okay. Here none. Declare, do I have anything else from the board? Okay. So I get a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll discuss this later on in the, in the meeting. Okay? It won't be too long, I don't think. Open, I said, other 6, 6:30 hearing. Planning board continued public hearing for 924 joint meeting, New View liabilities to assets. We had a hearing.
Can I start?
Yeah.
Can I start, John? Because I, so I wasn't at the meeting, I wasn't at the joint hearing on September 24th, but I did watch the video, and so I signed the certification under chapter 39, section 23D, stating that I'm a member of the planning board. I missed a hearing session on the matter of the joint hearing of the city council and the planning board held on September 24th. And on October 1st, this, first thing this morning, I watched the official video recording of the missed hearing, and so that way I'd like to participate in the deliberations tonight. I'll submit that.
Thank you, Carol.
You all looked great, by the way.
The deliberation is open. I'll open up, I get, Doug represented from New View here?
Yes.
I see it.
Yeah, I'm here.
So why don't you come forward? You don't have to be in the hot seat, just give us a little overview of where we are. I think there were some questions that came up the night before, and there were some concerns about a couple of the lots as the open meeting, because a couple of the homes, one of them was on 25 Pitt Street, if it was, and that one there, the homeowner said he was still working on the home. The other one, the second one, is on Eden Street, Eden Lane, I guess it is. And that one there, I had some questions on. That was the, I stopped by there again today and looked at it, and it looks like there's nobody living there now. They left a lot of things behind. There's a lot of trash on the floor, there's some furniture, but there's still an electric meter on the side of the house. And I'm saying, okay, you know, electric company's going to, nobody's living there, they're going to take it off unless somebody's owning the home and paying for electricity to keep the furnace running. I'm not sure. And that, that then tells me that there's, there's a mortgage or somebody's, or there's a, there's some financial value to that, that home that somebody's trying to maintain, okay? And which gave me, you know, and I couldn't seem to get information on the status of that property, or if it's mortgage, or if it was, was inconclusive. And so I'm, I'm apprehensive about putting that on the list, because I don't have the information. Do you have any more information on that property?
So.
Of those properties?
Sure, so the way the program works is, it's up to this, it's up to the city to decide how you want to do it, but we have 100 properties in all these communities. We're not doing, what we've done is the minimal diligence to think that they might be eligible for the program. In order to go forward after this, we would then have to do all the diligence that you're talking about, but we can't, each city, it's just, you know, do we, does the city think that they're eligible? If they think that they're eligible, they can go on the list. At that point, in order to go forward, for example, we would really have to certify, the city would have to certify, and New View would have to certify, liability assets would have to certify that the property was indeed vacant. So we might have a mistake on the 100 properties that we have in these five communities, and this is just the first step. That's as to the home that you thought might or might not be, be occupied. As to the one where the owner's doing work on it, different communities have taken different approaches to them. Some have said, "That's terrific that the person's doing work, we're going to put it on the list and make sure that they're doing their work," because many of these homes have had many troubles. Other, in other communities, people have said, "That really does look legitimate, and we'll just take them off the list now." Most communities have, communities have taken different approaches. So some have said, "That's great that you're doing the work, we're going to put it on the list." The fact that it's on the list doesn't mean that it goes forward, and, because that still has to come from something at the city of Lemonster, and if you don't keep it on the list, then you're, that you have no leverage over the person going forward. So different cities have taken different approaches to it, but there's no way that New View can go through and do all the diligence on all these properties. The next step would be in Lemonster, the city would propose one or two properties, we would then really dive into those properties, complete our diligence, make sure that's accurate, and at that point, those properties would either go forward, or if they didn't meet the test for diligence, they would then come off the list. They wouldn't come off the list, they just wouldn't, we wouldn't move forward with them at that. They'd either come off the list if they were occupied, or you might not move forward with them. If you have somebody doing work, you might say, "Oh, this guy's really doing work, we don't need to use scarce public resources on this project, let's let the private market take care of it."
Right. Question, as I read, it wasn't clear, and I'm trying to read it, yeah, I get into some of this legal ease, and I go right to sleep, so it's kind of tough. I admit into it. But will that come, I was given seven criteria with the planning board, okay, what our, what our responsibility was, and I want to live up to that. Now, is the, is New View going to come back to the city at a later date to say, "These are, we've really located, you know, isolated two or three homes in Lemonster we'll work on, and we'll come back to the planning board for further due diligence, or are we all done at this point?"
That's up to the city itself, so, but it, but you have, but the way it works is the, the planning board approves the overall process.
Right.
Then the city is the one that says, "We would like to do more," these are the two programs. It's not New View that's saying, "These are the homes."
Right.
The city itself says, "These are the homes we'd like to investigate." The city itself will do additional diligence, New View will also do diligence, and then we'll move those properties forward if that's what we choose to do.
Okay.
But this rests with the city. It doesn't rest with. So the city would then propose those properties to go forward, and then the New View Assets to Liabilities Board, which includes some members from New View communities and directors and a member of each municipality will also be on that board, collectively decides whether that project will go forward or not. So a reason a project might not go forward is it costs a million dollars. You know, it's a really, we've seen a couple of homes that are really, really large, we would love to do something with them, but they're just too much money. So that would be a reason, for one reason, why it might, why a city might propose something, and then the board might say, "This isn't an appropriate project, we don't have the funds to do that."
Okay. I'm just trying to get, and you have, just trying to isolate what, make sure we do our function, you know, properly, and we get, we cover all the bases. So I think the basis for the program is good and I just want to make sure we, you know, dot the i's across the t's as they say.
Well, what we needed tonight after the first, after the City Council hearing was just to approve moving forward with the process from the planning board.
Correct. So there's a draft report that you would then submit to the City Council. The City Council then reviews it and then sends it on to the mayor and then the mayor sends it to DA, to the Department of Housing and Community Development for acceptance. So at this point, you know, you visited the homes, Board of Health has visited the homes. Nobody has come forward to say they live in the homes.
No one guy has.
Well, he hasn't.
No, no, he doesn't.
He's working on it, that's right. He's working on it.
I went by after the meeting, so I liked the idea of keeping it on the list myself. So it wasn't like they came up with a magic number that said each community gets seven either.
The gentleman who was speaking on behalf of Fifth Street is not the owner of Fifth Street?
Well, he might be the owner.
He is.
But he doesn't, it's not, he doesn't...
He's not living there.
He's not living there. He said he owned it and...
I mean, somebody always owns something, right?
He supplied that, but health reasons, he didn't do anything. But it's back.
And what about the one that you...
Ethan Pla.
John just moved in. I'm still in the meeting.
All right, he's looking for the fix-up now.
So that, that was there. I, I looked at it. It doesn't look like anyone is living there now. They left a lot of things out, you know, there are condiments out there. Looked like they left in a hurry. But there's still trash piled up in the corner and things like that. But, but the question is, you know, usually typically, you know, there is still, somebody is watching over that home because there is still an electric meter on that, on that building. Either to keep the furnace running or something like that, so. And that's just a quandary because, you know, and, okay, it looked like it might be available, but just where is it? So I just wanted to define just where we are and that we don't go, you know, doing something in error. The other question I had was that, that came up, was upon the completion of these homes and you get a buyer. It seemed like the answer at the City Council meeting was, if somebody, you know, like seven years, that they had to live there seven years, they seem like a long time. I had done a lot of work with Habitat and Habitat is five years when they build a house before you can resell it. This was seven years. And if somebody leaves or buys a house and for some reason wants to sell it in five years, what happens? And that seemed to be an open question.
So they can sell the home. If they sell it, the idea is we want these, these, the idea is to promote homeownership. So they would then sell the home presumably to another owner-occupant. So that would be what would happen is they can still sell the home, but they need to sell it to somebody else who will live in the home. They can live in the home for one year and sell it, but we want it to remain owner-occupied. So it just has to be owner-occupied for seven years. It doesn't have to be, it's not that they can't sell it.
How about somebody going in there flipping it? You know, we've, the state has spent a lot of money to bring that house up to value, which had no, you know, very little value before. You maybe put a hundred thousand, I'll say a hundred thousand into a home and new heating and electric and things like that. And the new kitchens and bathrooms and a hundred would not be, you know, and then also you sell it for a hundred and twenty. It's really worth two hundred. And a year later, the person sells it for two hundred.
So they can't sell it for two hundred because the, for seven year, after seven years, they can sell it for whatever, after seven years, they can do whatever they want with it. During that seven-year timeframe, it has to be sold to an owner-occupant. It has to be sold at a price that is affordable to somebody earning 110% of the area median income. And there's also, and we're finalizing with the state, that will then be approved by the New View Liabilities to Assets Board, what is the correct amount of appreciation that somebody can get over, over that seven-year time period? So that we want people to be able to get some equity, just as you would if you moved into a home and it, the value went up. But we don't want them to be able to do what you're, the example that you're talking about.
But that hasn't been defined yet.
It's been fairly close to defined. There's going to be an amount that will, there's an amount of subsidy that will be burned off, one-seventh each year. That subsidy, so that's the basics of it. So in your example, if it was, instead of using a hundred thousand, if we use ninety-eight thousand dollars, it would be fourteen thousand dollars a year that would burn off and that person, so after the first year, they could get up to fourteen thousand dollars more. After two years, they could get twenty-eight thousand dollars more. I don't know all well maintaining the home at a price that's affordable for somebody earning 110% of area median income. So there's two caps on it. One, we want the person who's lived there to be able to get some appreciation, but we still want that home to be affordable for seven years for somebody earning 110% of area median income.
Yeah. The other thing with Habitat, you know, it's similar, so I'm using Habitat, is, and I was familiar with it. They have a continuing policy where they do an inspection every year of the home that their people will make. They have to maintain it and show that they've actually put a certain amount of money into the home. It could be fertilizer and how did they maintain the home? Will there be anything like that to follow up for that seven years?
So we are working on the, on the, how the monitoring agent, which is what that function will be.
Right.
The monitoring agent will at least assure that the home is owner-occupied. And then beyond that, we haven't quite gotten as to how we do that. It's, you know, it's intrusive to, somebody owns a home, this isn't an apartment. You can't go in. I mean, I suppose you could write it to go in and inspect, but that's not our default position. This is about stabilizing neighborhoods. We feel like the best way to do it is to have the home be treated as sort of a market rate home. We want to do enough improvements to be able to do that. So if you then start making it act more like an apartment than a home, we worry that that's defeating the purpose and that somebody wouldn't want to necessarily buy, why do I want to buy that home? I don't want, you know, Paul Weiser coming in and inspecting my home every year. We want, we want somebody, these are in a tough neighborhood. There, you know, there's clusters there. We want somebody who's willing to take a risk on the neighborhood because we want to stabilize the neighborhood. So we want as much as possible for it to look just like it would in a normal transaction. Again, there are some, so where you draw that line, that's the place where we're trying to draw that line is we want it to be owner-occupied for seven years and we don't want somebody able to flip it. So if we put in these other requirements, it more, it looks more like a rental apartment or a long-term...
Oh, no, that's just, you know, people, they have to maintain, you know, with them, they have to put in lawns and they have to mow it. Okay, somebody could buy a house and say, hey, I don't like lawns. And you know, and it's more on the outside upkeep. And you don't have anything there. It's not getting into the invasion of the home inside. It's, it's the outside appearance that they, that's concentrated on. So it might be something you might want to look at, okay? And, because that, that keeps it, because people, I mean, I know some, they own a homes, you know, people living in it and they really don't care what the outside looks like. And, and they, they got the two or three cars in their yard and the trees are growing through the cars that are there and, you know, it's, it's a mess. They haven't been in the backyard in three years, okay? So, and they own the home. So it's, and that, their, their home is owned, but at the same time, it's, it's drawing down the neighborhood because the exterior is not taken care of.
Is that something I can bring up? You know, the mon, as somebody, as the agency that's doing the monitoring, there's a question of just, you know, how that gets paid for and who does it? There's no, so it's something that we can bring up as a board. We haven't really gotten that far yet to talk about those specific duties, other than to make sure that the, there are basic duties that we've talked about, which is, as I said, making sure the home is owner-occupied and making sure that it's meeting the basics. That'd be something that we could, that the board...
I'm talking about basics. I'm not talking about fancy shrubbery or fancy walk. I'm just, hey, mow the grass and shovel it when it snows, you know?
What you're saying is what if, you know, you invest the money into rehabbing these properties and it's owner-occupied and it falls on the caveats that you have? And somebody, you know, then goes into disrepairing, but that would be the monitor and those are the things. And by disrepairing, it doesn't have to be mowing the lawn. It could be, you put a new roof on and having campfires on the roof. Stupid example, you know what I'm saying?
That's why they have a board and don't take...
And that's right. And that's, I just wanted to...
I mean, part of this though is, you know, these problems shouldn't arise because the cities, number one, are picking the properties that are moving forward. I mean, obviously, the work's getting done through New View liability assets, right? But if these things are happening, then clearly they should be, yeah, you could probably maybe stumble into a problem in the initial phases, but after that, those things should be tweaked, you know? I mean, they should, I mean, they should, it could be so...
I've seen, I've seen it happen. I've seen it happen in neighborhoods, okay, and people own homes, so with, with arguments, this type of, you know, to say, let's put something in there that you are gonna follow through. You are gonna look at it, okay? That there are some potential, potential problems. I'm not saying it's gonna happen, because I've seen it happen.
I will say, in all the homes that we've developed, homeownership homes, we have not had that issue. And we certainly have worked with people when they've had, you know, when they've had stuff that's happened. We've gone and spoken to them, but that's different from having a legal authority to be able to do things. We typically have not had that type of problem with homes that we've sold to first-time homebuyers.
And I just point out, as we talked last week, with City CDC, you know, New View has a long record of doing success and quality work in this community.
I have great progress.
They have my complete trust that they won't get this done.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with New View. Okay, that, please don't bring that forward. You know, that, that's, no, I'm not. This is a new program. Just trying to bring up potential problems, issues that, that bring, bring forward.
Yep, there, and that's one of the things about being a pilot program is I do think that might be something that we then tweak after year one or year two, which way it goes.
Yeah.
I would just say, there is a big difference between this program and Habitat. Habitat plays a really, really important role, but the homeowners that are moving into Habitat homes are at, they're very low income.
Oh, yes.
So they have very little disposable income. Here, this is not really an, it has some affordability component, but they can earn up to 110% of area median income. And again, we chose that higher area median income because we want to stabilize the neighborhood. That's the primary goal of this program, not affordability. Habitat has the reverse, where their primary goal is affordability, their secondary goal is neighborhood stabilization.
Right, and I agree with that, but they also try to follow them, you know? Working, I, I know it's different programs, but that's just what I'm familiar with, so I bring it forward. Some of the issues that they've had. Okay, Ford?
No, I think it's all good.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Do we have to...
Oh, does anyone have any questions?
I get a question in the audience.
Thanks, Steph.
Does anyone in the audience have a question? I'll ask one more time. Does anyone else in the audience have a question on New View? Okay, motion is in order to close the hearing.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Regularly called on.
I think it's coming up, here.
Called on.
Yeah.
Paul Weiser.
And they're almost...
Patrick Conning.
Here.
John Susan. Carol Victoriosa. Thomas Kerrigan.
Okay. Minutes of previous meetings.
You'll have them at the next meeting. We had computer issues all day today.
Okay. What are you gonna answer? Oh.
Oh.
Little wait. Okay.
Okay.
Two point O.
Two point, minutes, three point O, plans submitted. Site plan of Central Street. Map five hundred, parcel five.
We just received this. It's a construction of a new building to be used as commercial retail space. The project's not specifically known at this time, but are proposed to include those uses listed by right use per the zoning ordinance. So they can pass this down.
They have a drawing or...
No, I have all the files back in the office.
Okay, we don't need a drawing.
No, it's just site plan, so we just have to schedule it for now, yeah.
So the schedule will be the...
The fifteenth and we have nothing on that day.
October fifteenth?
So moved at six-thirty.
When is this, October fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I may not be at that meeting, just to let you know.
There's no special permit, I mean, it doesn't seem to be any special permit.
Okay, motion made and seconded for October fifteenth at six-thirty. Any discussion? Hearing not called for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Okay, old business. Plan Board, continue public hearing from nine twenty-four eighteen at six, at six-twenty-five for ten nineteen New View liability assets.
We send our recommendations to the City Council, please?
Have a motion made and seconded that we forward a recommendation to the City Council as they move forward with this project. Do we want to make any mention about the two properties that are...
Who said that?
No. No, because it doesn't have...
You made it.
Sal made it.
No.
Paul made it, Sal seconded.
No, I don't want to make any changes for the properties because they've addressed that.
That's correct.
Okay, with the, with the seven homes that are listed? Yes. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing not called for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
I'm sending this to you, Steph.
New business, site...
We have four minutes. Old business, we have to formal...
Old business, oh, yeah. Make a motion, add to old business.
Thank you very much.
Go point one.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Four point two? Okay. Nomination or recommendation on a new planning director? Recommendation from the, by me, is we make a motion that Elizabeth Wood be, be made the offer as for the planning director?
The first.
The first offer? Okay, and that...
That in case of refusing, we...
And in case of refusal, the second candidate be made the offer. Do we have any further discussion on that?
No, I'll make the, I'll, so moved, unless someone did, I wasn't paying attention.
Move is made and seconded.
Sal, huh?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, I mean...
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing not called for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Site plan approval for three-pointing industrial road. They must buy all apples from Sholl Farms.
That was a joke, for the record.
Just kidding.
Make a motion for approval with all conditions that the power heads met and...
Subject to, and subject to the...
Subject to the approval of the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve with potential department heads and with the Conservation Commission approval. Any discussion? Hearing not called for the vote. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Good luck. Communications, Plan Board recommendation for City Council petition eleven nineteen. Heather Breathover and ten registered voters accept Daniel Drive and accepted road in City Limits, Legal Affairs Majority Report.
Before you speak on this, the city clerk asked me if it would be okay to send these petitions via email going forward. Do you guys see any issues with it going via email instead of receiving on a word document?
What's that? Sorry, I'm sending you, just...
She's not paying attention.
I'm paying attention because I'm sending Steph that LTA recommendation, helping her out here till we get a plan. What was that again, Steph? I'm sorry.
The city clerk would like to try to get less paper and we're trying to figure out ways to do that. So she'd like to take all of the City Council petitions and send them via email instead of word documents. So the only change that I see is that I will just be printing the email as opposed to writing it to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Just want to make sure.
So we don't have to print them from home?
No, I'll print them and just...
If we're trying to conserve...
Hey, perhaps we don't want to do that.
We haven't gotten that far, but one piece.
Okay, this is on, this is on the communication. I think if this is gonna go to the DPW, I guess we gotta schedule it.
Have a recommendation from the interim planning director?
Yeah, it's still gonna go to the DPW. And, and we have to have a hearing.
Oh, the actual thing, okay.
Okay.
Say after, see if the committee's on this stuff.
It's not.
It's all told. Yeah. No, he did, yeah, but the DPW.
So, so, so this would have to be scheduled?
We have official...
So, so, so this would have to be scheduled? And I guess it's just a, a recommendation, I guess.
Why would you have a hearing?
For the road.
Why do we have to have a hearing?
Yeah, why do we have to have a hearing?
It's not a zoning change.
Not zoning.
You got a note on the planning director saying that the city at the time it was done said they wouldn't accept it, that it's in terrible condition and there's no reason to accept it, why are we going anywhere with it?
Yeah, why would we even consider, why waste time? You know, I mean, it's nice, we should have had the original email from the DPW versus, of course, the information together, but it's nice to know it came from what source. Yeah, what are we, what are we wasting time on this one?
You know what we'll do? Is refer back to the, the City Council, okay, with the road acceptance report from prior planning director.
I move we forward the road acceptance request report from the interim planning director back to the city.
And how it works, it takes years and all.
Okay. And a motion made, seconded? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing not called for the vote, all in favor say aye. All say no, motion carries. No directors report, I believe. And executive session none?
Motion to adjourn.
Sal, you're up.
I just made the motion.
All in favor say aye. All say no, motion carries.
That's what I'm trying to work.